Good evening, welcome to the Hammond City Council Public Hearing. Roll call?
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here. Public Hearing Number One. An ordinance to approve the vacation of Covetown Ridge subdivision lots one through forty-eight, including unimproved right-of-way Covetown Ridge Street. In accordance with survey by Dennis L. Galvin, recorded on twelve twenty-eight two thousand and six, Book one zero eight four, page four nine eight, instrument number seven four eight zero one five, Zone R S dash eight, S D V two zero one four dash six dash one. Josh Taylor.
All right, this is a subdivision that was, the final plat was filed a bit prematurely. It was actually never developed, it's still a field, and someone came in and bought it, and they want to return it to just a vacant field. They want to build a single house there, and they don't want forty-eight lots. So, this was pretty easy. It was recommended to approve unanimously by the Planning Commission, so, and, uh, leaves in Councilman Hood's district.
That's right, yeah.
Right there next to Forbes Farm.
Any questions, any questions from the public? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Now, we shall go into our regular session. Roll call?
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Here.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay. Mayor, would you honor us?
I will be glad to. You all would stand, please. Let us go to the Lord in prayer, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that we can come today and meet as free Americans. Father, this world is in turmoil, we pray that you will be with those around the world that are suffering. Father, we thank you today for all the volunteers that come and give their time and their effort and their resources for this city that we all might be a better place for all of our citizens. Father, we thank you for having your protective hand over us in these times of challenge. Father, we thank you for all of the good things that come to us, and it's in thy name that we pray, amen, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Mr. Dehans, now, please give us the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any council?
Mr. President, I just want to recognize my niece who's with us tonight, Mallory Marshall. She's visiting from, um, New Jersey, she's at Grassed in New York, and doing an internship at U N O in New Orleans this summer, and she's been very good for debates at the home for the summer, and she's outstanding. Also, Mallory is a former I B student in Orlando, Florida, finished, had finished University of Florida in three years, kumbaya, and now graduate school, so, I want to let you guys know that's my niece.
Well, good, welcome.
I hope you're giving them all they can have. Mr. President, I wanted to brag on Lacy, I had opportunity to go to the LMA convention of, 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 in the mayor. I sat in, one of the sessions I sat in was grant management, there were three presenters, the first two, I was being honest, Lacy, but Lacy stole the show, and I was sitting there realizing that we're very, very fortunate to have Lacy as our grant writer.
Very professional, too.
In fact, she texted me later and said, thanks for coming, you already know all of this, and I said, actually, I don't, and I don't have to know, because we have you. So, thank you, Lacy.
We have a number of things that we want to discuss. First thing is, sales tax collection, no, let's do video bingo receipts. We did receive our video bingo receipts, and those have already been advertised. A hundred and seventy thousand went to the city, forty-two thousand went to the children's museum. Sales tax collections, we just got those today. Our collections were one million four hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars, which was actually down about eight percent, but Jenny and I believe, or at least I believe, that there was some adjustments to last year's sales tax, because in the previous year, it was about a million four seventy-six and a million five thirty-six in the previous year before that, so, not panicked or any. We were talking about the Louisiana Municipal Association, and the city was very well represented. We want to talk about accolades. The city did win the Community Achievement Award, City of Hammond, for Outstanding Community Improvement in Economic Development for two thousand and thirteen. We had this posted on Facebook, I think you posted it right after we received the award, and we were excited about getting this. Since we're throwing accolades to Lacy, she did do the, all of the paperwork, sent it into the LMA, and this was for the development of the airport tower, and I'm sure that they'll have a good presentation for next year as well.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
No.
Let me tell a funny story, I'm going to do it anyway. We're sitting at dinner, and they're announcing the awards for community development, and they sort of announce it to, uh, who mentioned, and he goes, and he's texting Lacy, and they announced New Iberia, and the look on his face was priceless, like, and, and he goes, I said, well, maybe he said I cannot, oh, yes, it is, I like, all blood drained out of his face, just stopped texting.
Yeah, I was, I was shocked. But, since we're, again, since this seems to be the Lacy Landrum night, I think she has some announcements that she wants to make as well, so, Lacy, if you wouldn't mind, come on up and let us know what good news we heard today.
We have two wonderful announcements. First off, thank you for all the compliments. I have an amazing grants team, many of you have worked with Charles Borchers and with Lisa Lambert, there is no way we could do all that we do in the Grants Department without those two key individuals, and many of you assisted us with our projects. We have now installed recycling bins throughout our parks, throughout the city, and they're bright blue, you'll see them, they're very distinctive from our, separate from the trashcans, they are able to take both glass and plastic and cans, so you can put any kind of bottle or any kind of can in those, and we'll be collecting those and see, see how this goes. So, that's a new addition to all of our parks. The second announcement that we have is that we have just been awarded two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards Phase Two of Zeke Murray Park renovations. This is going to enable us to build a splash park, a toddler playground, we're going to convert two of the picnic pavilions to family style with four tables underneath them, we'll be installing a pond aeration system and a fishing station, so, it's a really great project we'll be starting later this year. We'll, we'll have the contract and everything for next, next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just made one more announcement, and speaking on Charles, and since Tina's here tonight, I wanted to make this announcement, the National League of Cities awarded or extended offer to the City of Hammond, to the Hammond Youth Education Alliance, to be a participant in a think tank meeting that's going to take place in Washington, and they've only invited, um, is it, how many, how many different?
Fifteen.
Fifteen cities in the whole entire United States, and we were asked to participate, and, and the mayor is aware of this, and the mayor approved it as well, and Charles is going to be going to represent the City of Hammond, and it's a, it's a huge accomplishment for us and a huge recognition, and Tina will be going along with him, so it'll be Tina, who's the Vice President of the Hammond Youth Education Alliance, and Charles, who's the grant writer, and they'll be working on a, on a national scale to discuss after-school implementation, and we've asked, were asked to come as representative of the, of the discussion, so, so, that's a great, great accomplishment.
Great, great. As we can see, Hammond is on the move. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Are there any new businesses in town? Say none, okay, approval of minutes.
So moved.
Johnny Blunt.
Um.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolutions, none, old business, none, new business? Number one. A resolution to approve Bees and Tees Tantalizing Barbecue located at sixteen zero one North Morrison Boulevard, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol on premises. The owner and operator is Bees and Tees Tantalizing Barbecue, Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is an alcohol permit that we're asking to be given to a restaurant who is going into the old McDonald's building that was across from Bill Hood's, that was previously a barbecue place. They have applied, they have met all of their, their, their application needs, everything's been signed off on, and we are asking that, that they are permitted to have high and low alcohol sales in this restaurant, and it would be a sixty-forty, it would not be a bar, it would be along with a restaurant. I'm not sure if someone's here tonight to represent them, I was told that there would be, and I don't see her here, so, um, that may, um, that may be an issue, I don't know, um, I don't see someone here, but, um, if you have any questions, if I can answer them, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay.
We can wait.
You want to wait a few minutes?
Really, I'll watch your table?
No.
So, do we want to maybe pass this by and go on to the next item?
Yes, yes, yes.
May I say real quickly, um, before we go on to another issue, it, just if there's anybody in the audience that is here, um, that was coming to be heard or listen to the setting of the millage rates for the tax year, next year, we had advertised it would be at this meeting, it has been postponed to be set for the next meeting, so just in case anyone is here, just to let them know.
Okay. Is there any reference to the millage?
Don't cut it later.
Okay, well, let's move on to number two. A resolution to approve change order number one for sewer rehabilitation infiltration inflow repairs, project six one six, three one four zero one.
This is a change order which, this is a four hundred and fifty day project, of course, we're about six months into it, you've seen all the work going on around, um, what's happened is we've done about a hundred and sixty-seven point repairs, surely you've seen Morris, Thomas, Charles, Robert, all over in this part, East Mary, um, our, our point repairs are running about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars over each time, for various reasons, we've done a hundred and sixty-seven, and we have another seven hundred to do, so we're projecting out to what it's going to cost, but the based on, we based it on ten by ten patch, and our patches are running eight by fifteen, a little bit more, we've run a little more backfill, and we've run into some problems with some, believe it or not, we have cast iron sewer services, we have a cutter, at least the contractor has a cutter for PVC, concrete, and clay, but not cast iron, so he's having a real hard time, we're having to pay him to go get a new cutter, a diamond-headed cutter, expensive cutter, so we've added a little bit for that, and the other thing is the state's asked for flowable fill, which certainly is a superior section when you're backfilling a hole, we use it often, often, Robert Morgan uses it, Gary uses it, and we didn't anticipate using it, but it is, it is better, so that's cost us a little bit of money, so what we've done is project out for the next seven hundred point repairs we have to do, and we figure it's going to probably push us around a hundred thousand dollars over, so that's kind of the general reason for the change order. The good news is, we have four point seven million, and we only have a contractor three point nine, so, we still have a lot of room, I'm hoping we don't spend all that, we certainly would like to do more rehab and not increase the cost of a particular point repair, but Inspector Delbert Moses is very conscientious, he's, he's on them all the time about squeezing it and making it better, and I just, after this many point repairs, I just don't see it happening, I think we're going to probably keep having this problem. When they dig down, and they dig down ten feet, they're supposed to have a one-on-one side slope, so you can figure it out, that's twenty on each side to have a one-on-one side slope for OSHA purposes, so we're just getting, we're running to some very deep, severe issues, uh, which I guess we shouldn't be real surprised, but we are a little bit surprised, so, this is basically to cover us down as we get through the rest of the project, I wouldn't expect there to be any significant additional changes unless we increase the scope by going further, doing more, more significant repairs. So this is the item you're looking right at, it should be a hyperlink as well, I just wanted you to look at it while I was talking, and you see there's seven items on here, two of which is based on the current contract, and five of which were new things, like the amount of lateral remote launch is because of the cast iron, that item forty-two we've added, we've come into couple sewer and water conflict boxes we've had to build without reload, we can't relocate either one of them for one reason or another, and we ran into some twenty-four inch sewer, which, you know, Gary didn't even know we had it, it was all eighteen inch on the maps, it's eighteen inch on all the videos, but when they dug down and put a tape on it, actually got it physically looked at, it was twenty-four inch, that's not a big number, but we, you know, we just, those, those things that happen. System was built in around nineteen twenty, and nobody really knows, you know, we're, we have real good records, Gary does a great, great job when he does dig down, identifying what's there, but, we have eighty miles of sewer, so, you know, if you've got ten or fifteen miles you don't know anything about, you'll find out when you dig down and start to fix it. So I recommend approval of change order number one, and the amount of one hundred and nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars extra for sewer rehabilitation infiltration inflow repairs. Anybody have any questions?
Chuck, is, uh, the reason that you're running into some of these challenges, because we're doing these in the major throughways?
That's, that's the driving force.
Are we going to find the same thing as we move into the neighborhoods, in your opinion? Or do you know?
You know, the old section of Hammond, I don't, I never heard of cast iron sewer service, so I don't know how many more of those, we've probably encountered, out of a hundred and sixty-seven point repairs, we've probably encountered sixty. I wouldn't have thought we've encountered five, and they're everywhere, they seem to be every time you turn around, so the answer is, you will probably, we'll probably uncover some surprises, I do think we will, I think with this, having done this many, I think we kind of can project out and cover us for the surprises, but I couldn't, I wish I knew more, I wouldn't be standing here, I'd be in Las Vegas.
But does this money include the previous encounters, or?
Yes.
So it's all inclusive of previous?
Yes. We, we, we really, we paid them for what they've done, it's running over every time, so we just finally sat down and looked hard at it about two weeks ago and said, where are we going with this, and we looked at each patch, and Delbert and I went out, talked to the contractor, and, you know, to be safe and to be perfectly upfront with you, I don't think we should wait till this, till the end of the job, and, like I say, we, this has been going on for a year, but we forgot to tell you, so.
Chuck, when we have a request for bids, do we consider, when they bid, do they consider that they might find something that, um, they hadn't expected?
Well, the, you know, you have to talk to the attorney about that, but the unforeseen conditions, you cannot require a contractor to bid for unforeseen conditions, it's called unforeseen conditions. You cannot just make him put a number out there and tell him it's yours, you just can't do it. That you could probably do it, but if you went to court, you'd lose, they'd make you pay the extra cost for an unforeseen condition, and these are unforeseen conditions, so the answer is, no, we do not throw them a curve and hope, and make them eat it, that's really what you're asking, you know, not a lot of people like that, I'm, I'm been there a long time, been doing this a long time, I like to do it too occasionally, but, to be fair with them, to keep them on the job, to keep them working, keep them profitable, you really got to take care of an unforeseen condition, and the attorney needs to.
It's almost like a change order.
This is a change order, precisely that.
Like, you know, you're doing, they either identify by the contractor.
Cast irons, it's cast iron sewer, we didn't tell them anything about it, we didn't even know about it, we admitted it, we didn't know they were there, and they're busting cutters every time they put one in, they hung one up and had to go do a point repair just to get the cutter out of the ground, it was seven feet deep and hung up in a cast iron, because their cutter wouldn't remove the surface, so, this is an unforeseen condition.
So they can put a contingency in, but it's for their safety?
No, they have, they have a hard contract per item. We have forty-one bid items, and those items we won't talk about, we don't give them any extra, we don't get it, if pipe goes up, if fuel goes up, none of that, but if they encounter something that we don't show or we don't reasonably imply, then we have to negotiate a change order.
I think the only concern, I think, of Councilman Martin was thinking, I was as well, like, a contractor couldn't use this as a way to lowball, to get a contract and then raise the prices after the fact, that's not.
They'll regret working for me if they do that, they'll regret it for their whole job, I don't buy that, no, sir. And this is in City Form, this is a local company, they've done many jobs for us, we don't have this problem, we, we think they're undermanned, that's just a personal edit, you didn't need, you didn't need probably editorial, you didn't need to hear, but I don't think they have enough crews on the job, they assure me in August they're going to really be all over the place, you know, Mark Nettles has done the point repairs, but in City Form has not been here very much, they keep pulling off and going to other jobs, and I've keep telling them the clock's ticking, don't come to me in February and ask for extra time, but, the answer to your question is, it's their contract, we can give them the commence date, and we can give them the completion date, and they can do it all the last week, but I know it's not realistic to do this big of a, this massive of a rehabilitation, you know, at the end of the contractor.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three. A resolution to purchase two two thousand fourteen Ford H F one fifty pickup trucks for the Water Department from Beale Hood Ford at seventeen thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars each, for a total of thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars. Ernest Peters.
Thank you, we bring this to the council for approval to purchase these vehicles from Beale Hood, we went to the contract, then we gave them the variance, uh, three percent variance, and they met that, so therefore, Gary has a need and has made that request, so we bring it for council approval, uh, at the fifth thirty-five one sixty-four.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, sir. A resolution authorizing the Holy Ghost Parish Fair to be held on October the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of two thousand and fourteen. Boundary set for the fair are Magnolia Street from West Colorado to the railroad track, and Northwest Railroad Avenue from West Colorado to the railroad track. Frankie.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Frankie, I thought your fair day was over.
You just don't know when you're going to get called these days, this is a Holy Ghost's church and school annual fair, and I think everybody's pretty familiar with it every year, so, I know that we have three resolutions, so, any questions on them?
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five. A resolution authorizing the Holy Ghost Fair, Parish Fair Committee to sell alcohol on Friday, October twenty-fourth from five P M. to ten P M. Saturday, October twenty-fifth from eight eight A. M. until ten P. M., and Sunday, October twenty-sixth from ten A. M. until seven P. M., within the boundaries set. Frankie.
Same thing, this is a Catholic function.
Just beer and, and share, Frankie?
Uh, maybe just a little.
Well, I know it's, it's not important, it's not necessary for me to give a disclaimer in terms of selling alcohol to minors.
We will have wristband, wristbands, and, so it's, it's, it's taken care of.
All right. Number six. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six. A resolution authorizing the Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to receive a waiver of the open container law on Friday, October twenty-fourth from five P. M. until ten P. M. Saturday, October twenty-fifth from eight A. M. till ten P. M., and Sunday, October twenty-sixth from ten A. M. till seven P. M., within the boundaries set.
Same, same thing, plastic cups.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you all.
Number seven. A resolution authorizing the Hammond Regional Arts Center to host and serve alcohol on Friday, September the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, from two P. M. until ten P. M., within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park for the Fifth Annual Brews Art Festival. Mike Keelgoor.
This is an ongoing event, right? Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight. A resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to get a waiver of the open container law on Friday, September twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, from two P. M. until ten P. M., within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park for the Fifth Annual Brews Art Festival. Mike. Motion to approve.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number nine. A resolution to authorize the Hammond Chamber of Commerce to serve alcohol from six P. M. until nine P. M. on Friday, August fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at the Chilling with the Chamber fundraiser event held at the Hammond Chamber of Commerce office, four hundred Northwest Railroad Avenue, Hammond. Chris Brennan.
Yes, sir, um, we, we're not included in the original boundary for hot August nights, so, we're basically, I'm here on behalf of the Chamber, just to ask for permission for us to be able to serve alcohol during our fundraiser, which is the same night, from six to nine. We've actually applied for and received our permit from the State Alcohol Office, so all we need now is just your permission to, to go on with our event.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Number ten. A resolution to appoint Joe Meyer to the Hammond Industrial Development Board. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, we have two organizations serving the industrial development group, the Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District, uh, which requires someone to be a resident inside the city limits of the City of Hammond, it was created by legislative act. The other, um, group that we have that's helping with industrial development is the Hammond Industrial Development Board. We did appoint, and the council did approve, Joe Meyer to HIDE, the Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District, but for some reason, it slipped through the cracks to have him appointed to the H I D V, so at this point, I would bring his name up for consideration for appointment to the Hammond Industrial Development Board, and he does serve on HIDE now.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Okay, we want to go back to new business number one. A resolution to approve Bees and Tees Tantalizing Barbecue located at sixteen zero one North Morrison Boulevard, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol on premises. The owner and operator is Bees and Tees Tantalizing Barbecue, Jenny.
Okay, um, we're asking for approval for the restaurant, all, they've met all their needs, and we have our representative here now to answer any of your questions. our representative here now to answer any of your questions, okay?
Can I have your name and-
Becky Wells. Your address? Sixteen oh one North Morrison Boulevard. And that's in hand.
Well, Mrs. Wells, one of the-
Can you tell us about the barbecue first? I'm just, that's why, it's tantalizing, I want to know more about that.
Well, it's terrific, you got to come in and check us out. Yes.
Which is special, I mean, you're r- risking?
Oh, man, it's all good. Yes, it's tantalizing. Yes.
You got to taste that?
Yes. All the size, baked beans, corn cob.
No calories, right?
No, not at all.
I'm there.
One of the concerns that we have, Ms. Wells, is make sure that there is protection to provide the avoidance of alcohol being served to minors.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yes.
Because you definitely will get tested, okay? And we don't want to hear any excuses of, "I didn't know," or whatever, okay? So, we're trusting in you that you will make sure that minors are not served alcohol on the premises.
Will do, sir.
All right. And we wish you well.
Thank you so much.
Motion to approve.
What's the projected opening date?
We're open.
Oh, you're open?
Yes.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Uh-huh. Excuse me. Mike's on. I live from my mom.
Yes, come see us, baby backs too.
Yes, ma'am.
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Address to Miss Jen. This establishment has not been one that serves alcohol in the past, and I've been here a lot of times hearing these requests, and often we hear alcohol was served there by a previous person, so we recommend approval for this new person. Is that likely to be the case here? This will be permanently a non-bar that serves alcohol? Well, and that it's very near the neighborhood and some other things there.
Jen, can you come up?
Including my own.
Yeah, it is, it is zoned for the sixty forty alcohol for that location, so there is a possibility that it could stay that way. We have a sheet that we have helped to kind of let us know what's going on there in the initial startup, of what time you're going to be open till, that you're not showing a 2:00 a.m. closing, because we don't feel like that's really a restaurant that's showing a 2:00 a.m. closing, which it has not. And, and we have a questionnaire that says, you know, your majority of your sales are food. And so, we've gone through the checkmarks of trying to cover all of our bases, so-
Once it's proved tonight, it's-
Once it's approved, then, yeah, it's, but we do keep an eye on it, and we will audit, and they do have the need of sixty forty. Thank you. You're welcome.
And they have to file with the state also, don't they?
For later?
To get the sixty forty designation?
Yes. Any other questions?
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Pete.
Thanks.
Number eleven. A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangi African American Museum, July one, 2014, to June thirtieth, 2015. Mayor Foster.
Thank you so much. The next four items are resolutions to consider the cooperative endeavor agreements with various entities. The city council has approved budgeting for each one of these entities, and in order to fund these entities, legally, we should have a cooperative endeavor agreement which outlines what the city is going to do and what the people that we are contracting with are going to do. And the first one that we have for consideration is with the Tangipahoa African American Heritage Museum and Veterans Archives. The funding for this entity is fifty thousand dollars, and we do recommend approval of the cooperative endeavor agreement.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number twelve. A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with CASA from July first, 2014, to June thirtieth, 2015. Mayor Foster.
CASA, we have funded CASA in the past. They do have a representative here, Mr. Rob Carlyle, who is the executive director of Child Advocacy Services. The agreement does specify what CASA does for the community and for our citizens, and I believe the funding for CASA is ten thousand dollars. And we recommend approval.
Full disclosure, I'm currently chairman of the board for that organization, should I abstain, or?
Are you getting ready to run?
Nope. Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number thirteen. A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Hammond Youth Education Alliance Incorporated to implement after-school programming in Hammond from July first, 2014, to June thirtieth, 2015. Mayor Foster.
Actually, I believe Tina Rutter is going to present this item.
Okay.
Good evening. The Hammond Youth After School Alliance is a group of people in the community that have come together over the last eighteen months, worked with the National League of Cities, we've worked with various members of the community, and also the Cal Louisiana Council for After School Learning. One of the agendas is for us to develop a network of after-school programs in this community. We've worked diligently to find groups of people that'd be willing to work with that, and it's been difficult to find true after-school programs in the city of Hammond. We've worked, we've talked to Holy Ghost, we've talked to Beacon Light, we've talked to First Presbyterian Church, those are some of the current existing after-school programs, and all of them were kind of leery about entering into this type of agreement because we have some specific curriculums and things we would like for them to work with, with the children, and they kind of want to see it actually happen first. So, Councilman Blunt, I would like to commend you for helping us with, St. Paul's has agreed to come on and work with us in setting up a program that will serve an outreach population of fifth through eighth graders as a pilot site, so that we can actually do this program, and then also provide some professional development to those other programs to show them how this would work to develop a community network of after-school learning for the city of Hammond. This is the agenda we're having, that we were invited to DC because there are very few small communities doing this. Most of this is in large communities like Nashville, Detroit, big cities. So, we're one of the very first small communities that are trying to create this type of environment for our students. And so, we've, we're looking at working with the Young Audience Program, which have been doing after-school learning for the last twenty years in the city of New Orleans, and they've agreed to come in here and help us set up our program. So, this is what we're asking the city to help us get started.
We also have Mrs., oh, do you not want to say anything? Mrs. Dangerfield is the representative of St. Paul, would you mind just stepping up and-
Tina, before you leave, would you give the show address and position with the Hammond Youth Education Office?
One eight zero seven three, Brandon Drive, Hammond, and I'm the vice president.
Good evening. My name is Erling Dangerfield, and I represent the St. Paul Missionary Baptist Church at 410 East Colorado, where the Reverend Robert McCarthy is our pastor, our leader. And we are excited about being able to, you know, invite you guys in to come and do whatever you can do to help our children in the community. And not only the children, just in our community or our church or wherever there is help needed. So, whatever you all can do, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I just add on to that, and I want to thank Tina and Ms. Betty Ednison, who's the secretary of the Alliance, and I work with the Alliance pretty close. We will be having a press conference on, on August the eleventh. Am I saying that right?
Tentative.
Tentative. And to, and we're inviting, you know, the mayor and the young audiences, the Alliance and St. Paul's Baptist Church, and we're going to release this, you know, have a press conference, and we'd love to have the Daily Star here as well. And we have some, hopefully one more announcement to make, just before I say, just want to let you know that tonight they're entertaining the same initiative in, at the school board based on your, based on your initiative, so-
Have you heard what they're doing?
Well, based on your commitment to the, to the, to the program, the school board is also considering to match the funds that the city of Hammond is putting up, so, we appreciate you very much for that.
Anything else?
I'm at the church, good evening.
Amen. That's it.
We're on to number fourteen now.
All right, we'll go on to number fourteen. Number fourteen. A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Crime Stoppers of Tangipahoa from July first, 2014, to June thirtieth, 2015. Mayor Foster.
I think everybody understands what Crime Stoppers does, it's been a very good organization for helping to fight crime throughout Tangipahoa Parish and St. Helena Parish now. Our partnership on this is for nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars, and we do recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number fifteen. A resolution declaring that surplus police radios and authorizing the sale of surplus police radios. Mayor Foster.
We do have some surplus police radios, we have approximately forty, about thirty-four, thirty-five of them that work. The police department has gone to a different band of, band of police radios, and so therefore, these are surplus radios. State law, Mr. Kootrain and I have talked about it, that if you have equipment that's valued less than five thousand dollars, we can, by resolution, declare these as surplus and authorize them to be sold to the highest bidder. We do have at least one other law enforcement, and the resolution does require them to be sold to a law enforcement agency, so that the bad guys out there can't get our radios and start listening on the police band. But we do have at least one law enforcement agency that's interested in purchasing these. You know, they're worth almost nothing, so we've set a price, it does have to have a sales price, and we've set a sales price in the resolution of at least ten dollars per radio. The law enforcement group that we're talking to has agreed to pay ten dollars or more. If there's anybody else, we do have to advertise it, which we will do, that we will be selling them. Whitney, you and I'll get together and talk about that if this resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion to approve. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, none, old business, none, new business, one, number one. Final adoption of an ordinance to approve the vacation of Covetown Ridge subdivision lots one through forty-eight, including unimproved right-of-way Covetown Ridge Street in accordance with survey by Dennis L. Garwin, recorded on twelve twenty-eight, two thousand six, Book one zero eight four, page four nine eight, instrument number seven four eight zero one five, Zone RS-eight, SDV two thousand fourteen dash six dash one.
So. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Marshall.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike, Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
So, you guys are confused now.
So many.
So many, so many.
Introduction of ordinance and set of public hearing. Number one. Introduction of an ordinance to provide for written authorization for trash fires and penalties for violation. Councilman Marshall.
Yeah, the ordinance is hyper-length, you can read it, and basically summarize it, we're just adding additional language to, to further require written approval from the fire chief or his destiny, if he approves any trash burning within the city limits, and also for violators, there's also going to be an additional fine associated with that, when we do have violations, and so, that's going to be introduced, hopefully, if you guys approve it, it'll be introduced and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Motion introduced.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August nineteenth, 2014.
Number two. Introduction of an ordinance declaring the immovable property at the old water tank site on Conrad Anderson Drive as surplus and not needed for a public purpose, and providing for the sale and related matters. Mayor Foster.
Gary Knight will be here, if this is approved for introduction, to discuss exactly what used to be there. There is, as it says, an old water tank on a piece of property that's in the, in the old industrial, the industrial park on Conrad Anderson Drive. We do have someone that is interested in that piece of property, they're willing to remove the water tank and rehabilitate it at no cost to the city, so we would ask that this be introduced, and we'll let Gary come and bring it totally up to date at the next meeting.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Listen, I-
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August nineteenth, 2014.
Okay. Number three.
No, I heard you say that.
I didn't hear.
Motion to table? Want some table, Ben?
What?
That's the next motion.
No, sir.
That's the introduction.
No, we need, we need to introduce.
Number three. Introduction of an ordinance to adopt and establish a tax on all taxable property within the corporate limits of Hammond for the year 2014. Jenny.
Jenny did step out, she had somewhere that she needed to go. This is what we've been talking about now for several months, and we were having a discussion as we were talking about the agenda items, and, and speaking with the city attorney, there is in the city charter a requirement that if we establish or if we levy a tax, that it be done by ordinance. There was a law that was passed that said that a resolution should be done, however, in order to be extremely cautious, since our city charter requires an ordinance, we think that it's better to go back and ask the city council to adopt and establish the tax rolls by ordinance versus the resolution that was originally proposed to the city council. The, the taxes do not change, this is not a roll-forward year, so really, it's just a, an approval that's required by legislative act each year.
Motion to introduce. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for August nineteenth, 2014.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.